We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. If everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
We have council's approval on the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, next is item two, awards, presentations, appointments, or proclamations. We have none. So we'll move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and report. Citizen comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. Would anybody like to come up?
My name's Pat O'Brien. I live in District One over on Grant Street. Should I address this issue now, or are you gonna have another citizen's comments later?
Yeah, we're gonna have another citizen's comment at the, at the meeting at six o'clock.
The property next to the Chinese restaurant and what's taking place over there.
Yeah, I would, I would wait until the second meeting, please. Thank you. Any who else have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Counsel? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item then. Number four, public hearings, we have none. Consent calendar, we have none. So we move on to item six point one, ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Discussion direction and potential action item regarding considerations and appointment to an anticipated city council District One seat. Marissa.
Thank you. So I would ask the council if you would consider following in a process for tonight. But before that, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what would happen with this potential vacancy on the council. So Councilman Atkinson's resignation is effective June 2nd. So if council decides tonight or at a subsequent meeting to appoint someone to fill that vacancy, that person won't be part of the city council until they're sworn in, which would be sometime after June 2nd. And then you would likely see them sitting up here for the July city council meeting. We only have the one meeting in June. And the person selected would be serving on the council in an appointed capacity until the November 2024 election, at which point they would need to choose to run if they wanted to stay on council, because they're only appointed until the next election. And so then they're on an uneven cycle, because typically District One, Three, and Five run together, and Two and Four run together. But District One would run with Two and Four in 2024, and have a two-year term, and then would go back to their cycle of a four-year term for 2026. And so the process, I would like to recommend, if council's okay with that. We have two applicants, but I only see one of them here. And so if council would agree, the candidate that's here can come up and make their opening statement. And then to keep it flowing smoothly with everybody able to ask their questions, we can start down at the end with Councilman Hedgecock and just sort of rotate through each council person asking one question, and then do another cycle. And if you still have questions after that, then just get the mayor's attention that you have additional questions. Or if you don't have a question, just, when it's your turn, state you don't have one. And then after council asks their questions, then open it up for members of the public to be able to ask questions.
Can I ask a question? So they don't get to finish out their term. They, they can only go to the next election. Are you sure about that?
Yes.
Is that a decision the city's making, or is that a decision that, is that how it has to be?
Yeah, per the elections.
I just wanted to get clarification on that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Not yet, not yet. If you can wait until, that way we can ask the questions, and then we'll call up the citizens. Yeah, go ahead and, you come up here, though.
Mary Jones, if you do that, potentially, you're gonna end up with only one, you could potentially end up with only one, unless it's only, however it happens, is potentially, you can end up with a council with only one person that's been there, right? Potentially? Isn't that, isn't that gonna be a problem with the way you run things, potentially?
No, I mean, we have to comply with the elections code, so they don't really care about that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chandler, if you'd come up to the lectern, please. Whenever you're ready. Yes.
You guys are intimidating. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Roger Schindler. Approximately six months ago, I ran in the, in the election for District One, and I was a very close second to the current council member, Adam Atkinson. I'm here today to ask for your consideration for appointment to the District One City Council position. I was born and raised in Kalinga, and I've spent most of my life here. I've had many jobs through the years, from chores on the family ranch as a youngster, to farm laborer, equipment operator, rig hand in oil fields. I've also worked as a network administrator at Vindolator Company, and later for Sony as a network and internet security administrator. I'm a veteran of the U.S. Army, where I learned to follow orders and lead others effectively. And I currently own and operate West Hills Machine Shop here in Kalinga. My beautiful wife Tammy and I raise two kids here. And now that they're grown, I find myself at a point in life to where I have time and the resources to give back to the community. I like the direction Kalinga is going currently, and I believe that my unique experiences would be beneficial in helping to keep it moving forward. I believe we can continue to improve modern and modernize infrastructure, bring job opportunities, affordable housing, affordable services, and more entertainment options for the residents of Kalinga. If appointed, I look forward to working with each of you and the many other city employees to make Kalinga a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Councilman Hedgecock.
I just wanna ask you about your community service, and things that you've done, and things that you think you can help with the community.
Community service? I don't really serve it in, in the community, per se. I donate and I help out where I can.
Well, that's community service. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Anything you've done to better the community is community service.
Okay. I, I help out all over the place. It's kind of a, I'd rather be the anonymous behind-the-scenes helper, actually. And, you know, I don't like to brag or anything, but I donate a lot to different causes and charities, in and around Kalinga. Is that sufficient?
Councilman Vosberg?
Yeah, so it's kind of a two-part question. One, have you looked at the city budget? And two, are you in favor of keeping a balanced budget?
Yes, I looked at the city budget. I'm not gonna say I completely understand it all, but I am in favor of balancing a budget. Yes.
Councilman Atkinson? Councilman Ramirez?
My question's just a one-part question. What is a significant view that made you wanna proceed your, now your time with being in the Senate Council and trying to better our community?
I just, I, I think that over the years, it's hard to, to explain it, but the city has given me a lot of opportunity. And I've come and gone, and I've learned a lot of things, and raised kids here. And I like, like I said, I like the way the city's going, the direction it seems to be going in. Seems like a positive direction. So I just wanna continue that. I wanna help to make good, good decisions to help Kalinga and the people.
Okay, my question would be, what would you suggest to help better our first responders to be able to grow and to be able to do their job better?
Training, 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 I think, is the key to that. I know he's got projects with cameras and, and things like that, drones, and, you know, the technology training, keeping current on resources, and a full staff if possible.
Then we'll move on to the second question, if you have any. Councilman Hedgecock? Councilman Vosberg?
So my only other question applies to, you know, we have a lot of things in Kalinga that are, not everyone agrees on. And we have a couple of things like cannabis that move our city forward, but not everyone agrees on that cannabis item itself. But I just wanna know if you'll be able to make, kind of unbiased decisions when it comes to decisions based on like permitting and things like that? Because it does, you know, a lot of that money does go to help our police and fire. And I know we all have different opinions on cannabis, so that's not saying, hey, you agree with it. But just kind of looking to see where you're at on that.
Yeah, if it's good for the city, then, then I would definitely consider it. My only concern is the placement of things like dispensaries. We got kids that are going to and from lunch from the high school, and they're, you know, they're walking right by them every day, so. Yes, I could make decisions, unbiased decisions. It would definitely depend on, obviously, what was wanted.
True. Thank you.
Councilman Atkinson? Ramirez?
We, we have young, young adult apprentices right here. What would you give her as an advice to join the city council? What would be your strongest point to give a young, a young adult that wants to pursue something in council or politics?
To encourage her?
Yeah, to encourage.
Honestly, I don't know. It took me years to get up the nerve to even try something like this. So I'd say if she's willing to do it now, she's, she's way ahead of me. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, my question is, what would, what would be your suggestion to keep council working together smoothly, to continue working together smoothly?
Personally, I believe in communication, and I know there's the Brown Act and other things that affect that, but good, good communication. I, I think, you know, before people jump to conclusions about other people and assume things, questions should be asked and answered. I think that's the key.
Counsel, have any more questions? Would any citizens like to ask a question?
My name is Tom Dominguez, and I think we touched on this. Do you know your biases? And because you know your biases, are you able to set those biases aside and make an unbiased decision?
I, I believe so. Where I'm at in life now, I've, I've learned that what you, what you believe does matter, but I think it's the greater good that, that matters here. So in my, my personal opinion, it really doesn't come into play, or shouldn't. And it's a hard thing not to do, but I'll make every effort not to.
Mary?
Sort of along the same lines, you know your biases and stuff. A lot of times, an issue might come up, and you have immediately one set opinion. And you may be presented with a sheet of facts. How aggressive, how aggressively would you look for other information to substantiate what you've been presented? And how? How do you think, do you think you would be able to respond to information that might not agree with it?
I, I, I would look at all the information, e- even if I had a preset opinion on it. I definitely will look at information, even, I change my mind on things all the time based on new and current information. Yeah, she can vouch for that. We argue all the time.
I know her.
Yeah.
I don't know you.
So, so I'm, I'm definitely open, open to new information and changing the way things are, for sure.
Does, does your work reflect your character, your work at work? Can you, could we just say that?
I hope so, yeah. I mean, I'd like to say that I treat everybody with respect and dignity that walks through my doors. And, and I do my best, and to go above and beyond for them.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Monty, about to ask a question.
Might as well, might as well get used to it now. You gotta, you gotta come up to the, to the lectern now.
It's more of a comment, not a question. I can confirm that you do treat people with respect and dignity who walk in your doors, because I myself have been there, because I had your daughter in an AP Bio class last year. We worked on a project. It was wonderful. They treated me kindly. They welcomed me, and...
Knew I seen you before.
Yeah. So I think you would make a wonderful council member.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I believe in you because your character reflects on your daughter, and I believe you would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Do we have the other applicant? Is she going to be attending this evening?
I have not personally heard from her, and I don't believe the clerk has, but I was told by another individual that she was not gonna be coming.
Okay. Okay, well, what council like to do?
Well, y'all know what I think. I would like to nominate Roger to take the count, the seat when it's vacated from District One.
I'll second that. We get a roll call, please.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Congratulations. In the, in the next couple weeks-ish, we'll get you all the information you'll need, so that way, when we get ready to actually initiate you into the seat, you'll know when. And I think in between that time, we'll also be scheduling some pictures, so we can get your picture up on the wall as well. Okay, we'll move on to announcements. As city manager, have any announcements?
I have none.
Council members, any announcements or reports?
I just have one. I'd just like to thank Taylor Cisneros for applying for the position. I know that her heart was in this, in order to serve the community. And so I just wanna say that I appreciate her for, for doing that. And then I also wanna welcome Mr. Schindler to the council.
Same note, I'm just, it makes me happy that when other individuals come up and wanna be in this council, or anything that has to do with the city, especially with our young adult here. It starts, you know, with her, it starts with them. And, you know, Miss Cisneros is a great person. She's a sweet, very wonderful educator. She was my son's teacher, and congratulations to him, Schindler. And, you know, if anybody else wants to, in the future, do it, I mean, you know, if they go against any of us, I mean, that just shows heart for the community and for our town to go ahead and get stronger.
Okay, I have no announcements yet. Any future agenda items? Counsel, whether you wanna wait till the regular meeting?
I have none. My wife got a flat tire. That's what I was, that's who I was texting, so I'm just letting everyone know.
Okay, oh, yeah.
I got one. I would love to see if we could get our young adult council, our picture, and she, if we could put her on, on the wall, if we could vote something like that. She's here all the time, I mean, she's putting in her time, and I think it would be fair enough for her to, you know, at least have something up on the wall.
Okay, and I have no items yet. We have no items for closed session. There is no closed session reports. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned until 6:00 PM this evening.